Thank you so much for joining us live here on Sly Media TV. As usual, we'll continue to bring you exciting and entertaining programs here on Sly Media TV. And this is one of the programs that's very entertaining. And we are blessed today to have Prophet Madungwe back in the studio. He has promised us that each month he will bring us good news. Good news from heaven, good news from God himself. So stay put, fasten your seatbelts. We are going to be cruising with Prophet Madungwe. I don't know where he's going to take us because he's the pilot. Because some of the roads that he uses, I don't understand them, they are spiritual. So yes, once again, I want to thank you for continuing to sign up to our page. Since we started this call that we want to reach 1 million followers, you are continuing to sign up. We are on 317,000 followers on Sly Media and on YouTube. We have seen a rapid increase. We are also 94,000 followers. I want to thank you for your hard earned cash that you spare to watch this program, which is a pay-per-view. You can't watch it without bundles. So we really appreciate you. You are our number one partner, you the followers, wherever you are watching us from. Without wasting much time, let me speak to Prophet Madungwe. How are you?
I'm good, and you?
I'm happy, but I also want to go back a little bit and tell us about your ministry.
Alright, Prophet Madungwe is the founder of Remnant Desire of All Nations Ministry based in Arar. It was started in 2013 in Sanningdale. But currently, we are now in town in the capital city of Zimbabwe, Arar. So Prophet Madungwe is a married family and he's the founder of that church. So we are doing Basaramwari. But our main focus is to preach the second coming of Jesus Christ, not prosperity gospel, which is a sin also. Because prosperity, Marie Alaidi, prosperity, it would be Savan Panamari, Jisavan, Panajunajunubatikasupanikasaga. We preach the second coming of Jesus Christ, not the prosperity sin, so the prosperity gospel. So we appeal to all churches which preaches prosperity. That's not gospel, that's heresy. People must repent, whether it's a big church or what.
We'll come back to the issue of prosperity, but I also want to come back to your life as the founder. When did you realize that you have a calling?
Alright, Prophet Madungwe, let me go back when I was a child, at the age of four years. That's when these things started. At the age of four years, I was praying because I grew up in a Christianite family. Even my grandmother, my grandfather, all they were Christianite, even my mom, even my parents. So at the age of one year, I was now a youth going to Sunday school and everything. Then at the age of four years, I was praying. When I was praying, one angelic, but a lesser angelic visited me. We started to chant, then I was ordained to be in the heavenly army at the age of four years. Then I started to rise within the ranks until I was the heavenly army commander, deputy heavenly army commander, that was 2016. Then in 2017, last year, then I was promoted to be the heavenly army commander. Then being a prophet, I was ordained fully in the year 2011. That's when I was ordained to be a prophet. So I used different types, titles like prophet, heavenly army commander, world president, all those titles. So prophet, it was 2011. Then army, heavenly army commander, that was 2021. Then deputy heavenly army commander, that was 2016. Then heavenly army, I joined at the age of four years. So Vipapu, ndripa ya four years, takatanga kukurati mu nyasha. Being loyal, ndikitere roja kanyanya. And chitani chonoma angelics, na zushkopa kuona mwaari, that was 2016. And abutanga no kuona mwaari ka one, takatanga no kuona lesser angelic, ndichie ndakusukua, 2016, na zui visit wa heaven, chitanga kuona mwaari after almost 30 years.
You spoke of you being the president, world president. So where is president, Idimunangabwa, where is president Ramaphosa in this area?
Alright, tina tino tima earthly president. World president, I think it's spiritual, world president. And umirilani ka this in terms of spiritual. So zukaita my spiritual father, Prophet Daniel of all the testament, he was the world president. Even Joseph of the Bible, he was the world president. And I shadaki nema president, nditzongoni kachidi sakandoba sarango. I'm not eliminating any institution or any government. Because any government, if it is noisa, you know, is kuona mwaari. So I have to type visa, my leaders are chosen and removed by God. So wa nu rambalari po. So in the end, the world's spiritual president, working without any boundary. You know, like doctors without boundaries. A doctor from America, abo shanda, abons, we do a certificate, aruns is without boundaries. Abons, tangabo, no kliyo, kuasosha ndamzibabo, dosha ndirisu, that's why it is the world president. Kabinamso, Tafrika naas, no vumzodokita basarangu.
So you know, take us through this spiritual way of life, where you have personally met God. One of our crew members was asking, "First, yamariya kaitase." Can you also answer on that one?
Alright, tingeti nyasha zapa prophet, ba zaka zonye kuanda. I fasted and fasted. The time, I didn't sararambba, jikara kuomu. I fast and I nama, and I di, shukona zukwansa kiro ni ma ranks, ma rachinditranasha through my loyalty. Because ma raga no loyaltya, kuwanu rambaba chukukiri zel. But the Bible says, "Humble yourself, and they shall lift you up." So I was a very humble person, even up to now. I listened to my boss. Wa nu, I shetola sho, wa nu da, wa nu tito prophet, wa nu penga, but I continue to listen to my boss. So that's humility. So nu tia utindrambi, dichisimuzo. Apana de la, ndagambo, tita rebel against God. Zeraketa satten, satten rebelled, and he was demoted from heavenly ranks. Saga, uga rambao, only very humility, nu rambao, dichisimuzo. So let us go to the face of God. Ma ronshasa, nu zidu the Christ of color. You know, the Christ of color, it's, setu kandamvora. It means iri colorless, and it is iri transparent. No, nu zidu Christ of color, like a glass color, and it is no color, nu shanswana mwaari, the brightness kupe nyankwa, and you know, color, nu shanswana mwaari. But ma rava nu shandi sa body, nu zidu the heavenly body. Let us create men on image, kines chapter one, and it is ma raja sika Adam. Adam, di angari mu ship ya mwaari, meso, no mu kuona banyika, vasmu ship ya mwaari. So zukka zem, na nu fano zonoma ramu, na nu fano zonomaari.
Well, you know, the spirit that is in us.
Yes, mka zuti the spirit, and it is, because on all things, the body. Munangani body ya Adam, cha ya cha ya. Angani body siya mwaari, ndi Adam, akaita zukusikuwa na mwaari, and it is, wa rukujaroa alanda, wa ni, ane aginzi ma photocopy. Photocopy, nu original, zukasiana, udochitasu zukafana, and it is. Saga, body, ma features are tinau, ano wa ni kwa. But tininda pana Adam, saga, tisisi na any person like that on earth, ane body siya Adam. Kala ni ma photocopy, apasina original. Because wa nu, wa kuza zukujaroa through a woman. Munajaroa ni, a woman, a anze, ane body like of God, ane the spirit of God, it is inside. Angu is with the spirit, saga, ana the body of Christ. But zukada kuza zofana ni, nu kozu, nu nozuma features was zing, but zukasiyana totally. Because yamari can disappear, yamari cannot die. So that body zukasiyana, so that's the body of God. Then, ma body acho, ane, anu zidu ma wings. Kala wa nu, ma shandi saga, na lesi to fly, kana jiji, ana bodas, setu tandeke kutiti. Because technology, setu kupa watira, and it is, juvaara, and it is, ma angelic, aga la banyika, munadi, Adam, a nu zaga, no three men, wa lasina mapapiro. But God was one saint, then two angelic, aga nu para zasoduma, and it is. But the Bible, raka tanga kwe, umsorori gati, three men, kines chapter 18, and it is. Pakati nu, balasuti, two angelic na mwaari, and it is. Then, but white ones may, and it is, wa la ni chie, and it is. Correct, body, edu neka fa. But that body, man, it no change depending na siya iri ku. Ikashike, ikadati ma wingsa, it no, ino va ya boitza. Ikadakuma, yika, ino ma yu, kaskani, ni ni no ma wings, isu su atina ma wings. So zan tuta, atisi sina, that body, because Adam, isisri body, si na staru jaro. So that body, it advanced in a race. Like, zukaita, like, what I said, ma fighter jets, and it is. Fighter jets, ni ni ina race. Kala, lutugotu, what I t, the fleet ajo, and it is. Wa ni, like, chakata chi ship, and it is, ju ti ne, chi ne runway, ma jets aji, aji, and it is. Pacha ya ka kwanas, saga, that body, pacha ya ka kwanas, ikada ma wings, ikada zhi. Ika daru, ika nesu, that is the body of God. Well advanced, the body.
Okay. Ne chiso, she di tutu kasa uto, kutu mono, kana da wa ni, wa nyasi?
Alright, then, pa kuona neka, amara wa nu neke zukuma. Alright, let me give you, because I want to explain, zidu zidu ziduka, Jesu ipama.
Yeah, ma zanu tukara, zidu zidu, because, du pa nu zuduka, wa nu pe ngabepe. Because wa nu, wa tio t, zukta ha murumuka.
I know, one, one not, ndri es, Zimbabwe. Uga buzat, president, wa ku ndiana, ndu du nu tidi president, nu na kagwa, and it is. But pana kashika, the president, nu we se, but the world president, wa ki, no. Only the selected, kana ma ministers, zaka nu rambu, bukongo, nu no ji. Same order, and it is, same scenario, even kuona mwaari. As you know, di nu we se, kati, ma ri, meso, ma kuza kuona. Only the selected, wa ri, the few. Then, ingati describe by the body, acho, it well advanced, and it is. Ine maziso, like, isu zidu ma so tuk. Ma angelic, man, a ni maziso kwe. Ku na ni maziso kwe, ku na ni ku fronti, ku na ni chi. That body is well advanced, I think.
Is it a vision?
They can, zukuti, enjoy, aina, pasan uku miruti, let me tell, nimbo tasa, kana evi ni mwaari, and it is. Even wa ra garai in heaven, and it is. You can, saga, that is their body, and it is. Aitima maziso, saga, body acho, iri advanced, that again, it is, zukuta two maziso. Ma angelic, and it is, two maziso, even ma wings. Ma wangati, kana four, ma wangati, aga wanti sa ma wings. And it is, saga, that, even ma arms, ma angelic, aitima arms oha. Aga wanda, pa one angelic, and it is. Saga, that body, it means it's very advanced, the body. Then, ma angelic footage, even chitasa mwaari, a nu garani, it means ammunition, cha o. And it is, especially, because dream department, especially, ari e wunu. But ma angelic says, aga fana na. But zuno zidu design wa, zukaita, alright, mota. Tinajis ma, ma mota, zidu nikis ma wanta fita, and it is, zunu takura wa. Tinabaz, saga, zuno zidu dependa, nu tii, rita basare. Especially, zegu heavenly army, and it is, ammunition, and it is, it can fight ma betus, iri yeng. Aituti, one angelic came silence the whole world, it one, the betu. The whole world, nu kasa miya ramese, ni one angelic, iri one. Setu kaita, pa tem ya, pa pa, pa tem ya fara, and it is. Aina zaga, tuta, that angelic, ya ku ta pass by, the heavenly army. Ya ku ta pass by, that presence, it ya ku pura. Presence, eh ku ya ka pura. Paka sarapachita death, ni, presence ya ujiti.
No presence, yeah.
Ni, 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 presence ya ujiti.
Prophet Madungwe, mwaari, tisa tataru, ne nyayi invitation, yenyu, yeku denka. Akabutso na mwaari, mo zunu. I mean, say, mwaari, mu Africa, yes, zidu kama tasa kano ku Europe. Aga zongosolo zoh, i mean, ku timuwe heavenly commander, and you speak of your closeness to God. You know, it's unbelievable. Why you?
Yeah, ma ronut, ndinosarudza wa ndada. Zukaitu wa Mary. Di egaga, ngu zidu, one person on earth, this are rumana kuma na wangu. Akuna, there many girls, and it is. Even Jesu, nu da, anu t, Papa ni shirikadzngani. But Elijah, gans, endak shirikadzwa one, nzaraya tsi rudi, and it is. But only one widow was remembered, and it is. Only one girl, Mary, was remembered. So zukuniye zukuranga ruru wa na mwaari, mwaari wa ju zidu nu we se. One, 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 ju zidu specifically. So Prophet Madungwe was located in the mwaari, wa tu wa nu, nu shami sira. Arambu, tura ko, America, ku zidu, the superpower, kana, kana Russia, ku zidu sa devil army commander, go go no. Zukaita Jesu, and it is, you betle him, and it is. Usasuti, ru ni ki, wa kaja ruaji, ana Jesu, and it is. Ah, pani tiga bu de, wa kaja ruaji, zukuku, ndo wa kaja ruji. Saga, ma ron tu kwa katushu zidu, zidu, because Zimbabwe, zidu, 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 Zimbabwe, the small machine, na ito, buris, superpower, nduka bu zidu ra devil army commander. Saga, nyasha, zukaitu Mary, zuka kuwa na Esther. Saga, ndo zasunui. Because, nozzi, nyasha, nyasha, adzafano ku ya pa nu deserve. It's me ya pasina deserve.
Alright, kukuruka na Prophet Madungwe. Vanu, nduwe, Mutunga Milo founder, where desire for all nations, Remnant Church. Church, iru ku re?
Yeah, church, iru ku re, people are repenting, wa nu, wa nu tega, bozi. Ticharisa Prophet Madungwe, zwa kana ki, wa nu tawara, shoku, nu seva wa nu. Rukuta in line with the God. Because the problem, ne ma church is, and it is. As you know, di magati church, it's a church, no? Ma ma church, I may be gonna ask ma church, ma ginge, ma ma business. Ah, we, because wa nu, ku tia offering. Akuna, mu na no vumzodokita, ku church asna offering. Chero kuona mu na mwaari, we must not go free. But pakai swa, tag, fi, ku na mu na mwaari, a hundred dollars, it's not a church. Whether maka wanga namuri 2 million, it's not a church. Because pakai swa, figure, it's not a business.
Okay.
But mu na, ah vumzodokita ku church, because, point, di unga ni za, ipape, weekly, and it is, mu na ni ma offerings. All the testament, pa viswa, yenz, 10% tithe. New testament, kanzan, ndichaa di ma tithe, ndakuti, anu zidu, offerings, di ma Thanksgiving, more than 10%. Nu ku na viswa, paya ku yesa, and it is. Saga, apana kuva, saga, ma church, ma, aki sa mwaari, ma, aki sa mwaari.
Ma wa nu, wa ne, esa, I don't know, kajis ku, ona prophet, isese, that's sin against God.
It's a sin, because pakai swa, figure. Yes, mu na ah vumzodokita ku na mu na mwaari, u sin.
So what's your answer, come, brother?
Because, I ask ma church, ma business.
And it is, aha wanda ka?
Yes, and this is, I ask my church, ma ginge, ma business. One way business, wa uya, nu ba wa isachi, start a church.
Okay.
Eh, bozi, kala wa swa, figure, ku ta ku na mu na mwaari, hundred dollars, 300.
Danaki zwa, 100 is.
It's not a church. Ya duha business. I isisiri church, aju snaba rimkat, and it is. Wa ni, kwa saras, zukaita, saw, and mu nu tisaw, you was a leader. David, a tu, a nu entwa pa, and it is. But saw, akaramba aru the king. Wa nu, I tu, and it, nu ku na mambu, kajti nu ku na saw. But ma raja, chutu, ndasotza David, arukuma kuwa, nde mambu wa. Nde, it is, mambu, isire, na mwaari. So zukka, wa nu, ju tui, ku church, saga, let people be very careful. Kuti wa nu, ndaku church, erda nu, ya inbu zidu church. Because church, ya, ikatanga, zaka, na kana, zidu, zidu, pinamera, I isisiri church. Kala, maka, di naga, mso ri church, footage, I so ri church.
Brother Madungwe, zatambe ni wa.
Even I am there, because the sway, di chi visitor heaven, zukuniye mwaari, because ma rava nu, chi tu zaresu, ku ta ya, apana shiriki.
Or, kati, mu tawara, mu nyaya, icho kari, ru zidu mwaari, ndiye mori zue, we ma minerals, ese. Icho kari. So, even ne, bozi, si ne nyayamori, I mean, and you know, zidu, amchi tita accepta, ningi. Oh, zomtukutu, ta, pinda, pinda ku denka, ningi ta muramba. So, pa, pa, bozi, si ne, amchi tara, amchi ta, you are inclusive of yourself, mu area, ki, yoku tongwa, ku ku ituwa shunu, pa na banyika, and it is. Tichita, ndo, ndicho kara, this.
Yeah, Jaishu Nuita, and it is.
Right, I am, buzo, wa nu, duho ku. So, even mu nu kwanza, ru ku nu kora gold, mu tu tanga, otu ku tengesa, ni simbara minaro, ni, bozi, si ne, ya mina, uni, will it be sin against God, ku ku, ma ku nu kora gold, so, mu wa nu, ku tengesa, ku si delete.
Alright, Jaishu Nuita, mu nu tijisu, pakao ya vanaweze, wa kama buzo, ambuzo. Kanzu, mja di zosira u mampu, we nu ri, kala, wa, jisu zan tega we. Saga, isusu ka di chi we. I never come for prosperity, and it is. I come, ku ti wa nu, attending, that's my main purpose, and it is. Ku ti wa nu, attending, ka, I jesu, ah ku zuka, for the second coming. Wa nu, invite my systems, and, tataru, nyayi Easter, tijani, nyayi the Christmas, and it is, tichifama, and it is. No Basarangu, I do not go zuka, saga, gold, kana chi. And the Ramu, it is gold, ra ju futu, and it is. It's not gold, nu zidu fake gold. Maka zidu, ndakini heaven, nu zidu pure gold. Ira, si gold, Ramu to gold, Ramu, sarambi, netara aginzi, America, ya ya, ita blacklist, your gold, ita, this is gold.
So, mu nu, kala, mu nu, ndeke, ku ku, zanu buzo, even church, nu damar, kama instruments, in ma church, ku nu ku nu kora ka gold, and it is.
Alright, God, ni, rekatu ya pa na papanika, heavenly gold, and shande, because, am, tori zidu.
But, irona, irona, repa nu, ni simbara minaro, repa nu pasiro, ndu nu zidu, amkwanse, nu ku nu kora irono.
Yeah, Jaishu Nuita, di zukuti, gold, kana di chi.
Nu ku ra ku, church, nu damar, zanu, nu ku nu zan, zan ku da uta, orre.
Yeah, isusu church, di, zidu, ni fund wa na mwaari. Apana, pana, kama bu funda church.
So, rama, kana, basa, nu ku tu, ku nu tengesa.
I'm not worried about earthly things.
Thank you so much. Prophet, God has said, has invited you. Let's walk that journey now. Hans, mu yo zodi?
Prophet Madungwe was recently in a prayer. Prophet was praying, and praying for hours. Mkuwa na, pa ku tia, zuka, daaru, ku invitation, inu va ya pinda. Pa ni, kwa itwa nu, zidu, ma prayers. Pa na ma tuwa zaga simba, ma hours, ni ma hours. Danbu, zidu disconnecta ku bapanika. So, ndichinamatak dial, first, I heard a sound like an earthquake in heaven. Then heaven was opened. Then I saw one angelic descending from the throne of God. But yango, a higher angelic. So, the sound accompanied it. Then it reached the prophet, wachinamat. Then the invitation was issued, that the prophet must come to heaven. But let me explain. Prophet, one visitor heaven, even any day. Even ndripa, I can visit heaven, ndripa interview. Even ndripa.
Kuadu mende, alright.
So, jia, jia, explain.
To go to discuss any other one, it means officially, I see you. And then we talk about that, we talk about that in the morning. And then, can I, who can I talk about? Because when we talk, Prophet in the morning, he will be like, oh, you. Because when we, Papa, when we talk about you, servant of God, tell this, so that, you can talk about it. And then, so that, so it means officially. But even when, when we talk about that, so that, I'm preparing, and then, so that, in the new, it's right before the interview, and then, when we talk about that, it's not for me. Because then I can visit heaven anytime I want, because I am the heavenly commander any day. Then, when we meet in heaven, so that, upon the day, every day, upon upon night, twenty-four hours, in heaven. Because my offices there, they're in heaven, so that, I, twenty-four hours, in this city, in heaven, I, in the morning, open my office. When we say that, in this, in this office, I, the report, I go, my angelics, yes, I announce my reports every day. I know my reports, I'm a spiritual betters. So that, it means officially, one, we talk about this, any other one, when we talk about this, so, can I, you can talk about it, when I, so that, I will be like, oh, you, message you were delivered to you. Can I, it means, it means, we don't discuss, wow, and then, after, by the, eh, pressure, you crane is too much, and then, so that, I don't have to, so that, I don't have to, no, it means, it means, you talk about this, eh, it's a, discussed, Prophet and God, but, when I go, Prophet, when I go, Jesus Christ, when I go, Prophet, Madungwe, the heavenly commander, when I go, go, to discuss any other, like the Ukraine issue, to discuss, so that, we talk about that, what God is saying about, what current on, on earth, and then,
It's, 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 it's on the Ukraine.
Eh, in the Ukraine, so that, it's for the people, it's not for me. So that, I don't have to praise them.
So, but, it means, eh, program, by program, we talk about this, we talk about this, eh, 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 Ukraine, and then,
Eh, it means Ukraine, it means my, my apostles.
Eh, my apostles.
Eh, the burial of the apostles.
Eh, you don't discuss, or you don't, you don't answer?
Yeah, each of us discuss, so that, we give them information.
Oh, church, if you need, it means, my apostles.
Yeah, but, but, I don't know, eh, yeah, I want this, so that, eh, it means, question that arises, if you go to Vatican, alright, Italy, that means Roman Catholic, eh, Catholic, it's a nation, Catholic, when I go to Italy, we don't have visa, we go to Vatican City. And then, it's a city, Vatican City, eh, the Roman, and then, even when I'm in Rio, it's like, eh, US, we don't change, we go to, eh, Vatican, this is Vatican, it's a great city, and then, then, we don't go to, eh, no, we bury, poor, Peter, the apostle, was crucified there by the Romans, and was buried there. So that, that, it means, Vatican does not save God, Vatican City.
Okay.
Eh, so that, the question was, so that, I complain, not Prophet, so that, I don't have to.
Because, my apostles, I go, I go.
Eh, I go, eh, eh, was the Vatican, and then, you know, but, the Roman Empire, eh, eh, wrong.
So, I don't have to solution it, eh, would.
So that, we don't have to discuss some situations, so that, there, eh, what, eh, what situation, you talk about, eh.
Actually, that's a rebury.
I'm sorry, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I don't know, so that.
Can I, we talk about it, we talk about it, we release all information, to consult, eh, the issue, you get, was raised too much, and then, because, the law says, the heavenly army, when you talk about this, still cannot, when I, the pressure, the heavenly army must act. So, if the heavenly, we have to act, so that, we talk about this, you talk about this, you talk about this, you talk about this, my apostles.
Yeah, I can understand the pressure, eh, eh, Ukraine, not one, but, it's, we, we, we don't want that to happen, war is not good.
Then, my burial, eh, my burial pressure, eh, if you know.
My interest is in my basis.
In Africa, we have to get special options by God as compared to other nations.
Even after I depart from this earth, I shall continue being the evangelim commander. But that grace was given automatically. The evangelim commander last year said Zimbabwe shall not be treated. Even Zimbabwe had the status of the one in land, one in land for the genders, Queen Testament. Zimbabwe already has to see that it's a special nation towards God's eyes.
It's a special nation towards God's eyes.
It's equivalent to Israel.
It's equivalent to Israel. But why are we having these economic challenges in this country yet we have found favor with God?
All right, even just back to Israel, they were slaves to, Pilate was in Roman judge. We were slaves. And also, Zimbabwe took a lot of place in a better life. But when I'm on a mat, I guess America, I'm not going to say this.
Is that a punishment, Jesus?
No, we are not punishment. Poor are not, they need a throne, so that, you know, it's like something, it's a sensor, it's a controller. Spirituality rate, it's very high, but it's not a matter. So poverty, it's a controlling rate for Zimbabwe. It's a controlling rate for Zimbabwe. It's a measure, it's a temporary seeking God.
So it's a special option, honestly?
We are living by grace. We're not going to marry.
Because there is a section of the society. Zimbabwe, we are not merely, we are squitter and come and ripo, I think it's a day I change. It's not a secret.
All right, I don't know, but it's a problem, even yes, because unemployment in America. Unemployment beneficial. I don't know, but yes, it's not my fault, it's not my fault, and I cannot argue about that. Do not think the government, even in America, do not protest. I need to go to Spain.
You know, we have to say, like the troffer apostles, let us come back, we're in the month of April and Easter is around the corner. You seem to be against Easter.
I am not against Easter, I am against sin. Easter is a sin, so I'm against sin, not against Easter.
Why do you classify Easter as a sin?
It's a sin, all right, let me explain. Bible, all the testament that passes over, why? Why is it a mirror of Jesus? Jesus is the lamp, no, but he is who he is. No, but I see him pass over, because he is the last lamp. So I see mirror pass over. So I see the Lord, the law is, Bible says, do only commune always in my remembrance. So Easter is a day, it's a day in the Bible. Christmas is a day in the Bible. But, 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 Genesis chapter 11, no, because Satan manifested on earth. So I see one, three, and Adam, I see Jesus. But when I'm on a mat, I see, I'm not going to say this. Solomon, I don't know, I don't know, Solomon, he is in eleven. He is in eleven, no, he is in eleven. But he is a group, he is a group in America. No, he is Moses, but he is Abraham, Genesis eleven, but not Lot. Because he is a god, he is a god. He is a god, so I don't know, so these holidays, I see, I go to the first church. Church, he is a apostles, the foundation of the apostles, who is the chief apostle, in the Bible. Roman Catholic, it was, Roman Catholic, it's a political party, not a church. No, but go to the history, even history is written. No, but he is a Christian, he is a Christian. No, but he is joining, then it swallowed up. He is joining, it's not a Christian, it's a Jewish. No, but he is a Christian, because he is a political party, no, but he is Torah, no, but he is Pinz. He is a holiday, I am a church. No, but I see, no, but I see Easter. But Easter, he is not, because he is Easter. He is Easter, because he is eleven, he is not a holiday, no, because he is Jesus. When he is twenty-five, when I'm on a mat, he is Thomas, no, because he is Jesus. Every day, arena bass, he doesn't celebrate, not a Jewish. So, because, even if you go to church, even if you go to church, it's a form. No, but he is a joy, he is prosperity, he is a church, he is a church of Galatians, the church of this. But it was demolished by the first political party, he is Catholicism. He destroyed, no, but he is a church, no, but he is a church, no, but he is a church, he is dead. Because, because Catholicism, so Catholicism, holidays, Genesis chapter eleven. So, 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 I think, I'm not going to say, but we are ready to judge. I'm going to visit heaven, so everyone who shall celebrate can't be upon thee. Can I just say, even automatic disqualification of heaven. I believe it's a celebratory, Easter is a celebratory. Jesus is a Jewish.
Yes, it's a celebratory, Easter, yes, it's a sin.
All right, but, but, Jesus, I don't know, I'm not going to say this. My church, my church, my church. Because, because, Jesus, even if you try, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So, even if you try, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So, why, oh, the testament, I'm not going to say this. So, I don't know, my churches, yes, I don't know, my church, my church. Then, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, but I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, it's biblical, I don't know, it's Christmas biblical. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So, because, why, why, why? Why, why? So, it's a Jewish. I don't know, so, so, I don't know.
I don't know, it's a Christmas.
No, I don't know, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. Don't think, I don't know, it's a, it's a. No, it's a, it's a. I don't know, it's a, it's a. Because, it's a, it's a. Because, it's a, it's a. Even poor, I don't know, Colossians chapter two, I don't know, I don't know, festivals, I saw a moon festival. No, I'm not going to say, but I, I'm not going to say, even poor, I don't know, I don't know. A moon festival, it's a, it's a. Colossians chapter two, 16, 17. So, I don't know, I don't know. Because, I don't know, festivals, it's a welcome, it's a, it's a. So, I don't know, I don't know. So, we are not against, Jesus, which is a holiday, I don't know, it's a public holiday. I don't know, I don't know, it's a defense, it's a, it's a. So, the Bible says, my people, they perish, because they lack knowledge. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, so, so, I don't know. It was a prostitute in America, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Bible, we love one another every day, we do not love, it's fourteen February, every day.
So, you don't want to go to Jesus, I don't know, I don't know.
All right, I don't know, but, but.
Because, because, it's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Jesus, I don't know, Jesus is a Jewish. A Jewish, I don't know, I don't know. And then, we are not supposed to recognize such.
All right, one, there is no excuse before God. Because, because, in a wrong way. All right, let me give you example. When I'm on a mat, it's not a sin, but it's the same act.
Now, you don't want to, you don't want to. But, but, you don't want to go to Christ, but you want to bury your foot cup. And people are recognizing that, and then you want to, all right. I don't know, I don't know.
So, I don't know. Because, because, I don't know, I don't know. I see focus, it's a, it's a. It's a focus, it's a. And then, Jesus, he is a Jewish, I don't know, he is a Jewish. So, I don't know, I don't know. I see, I don't know, I don't know. So, Roman Catholic, I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Bible, I don't know, it's a, it's a. So, I don't know, it's a sin. Because, I don't know, it's a holiday, I don't know, it's a Babylon. So, when I read Revelation, I don't know, the fourth Babylon, fourth Babylon, those are the practices. So, my practices, Babylon, I see, I see. I see, so the Bible says, do not conform to the world. Because, I don't know, I don't know. So, Jesus, the Christian, that's what I said, my holidays, I don't know, but, but, I don't know, but, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. But, but, I don't know, I don't know. But, Jesus, the gospel, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. But, but, we will leave this question to you and Prophet Madungwe.
For you to debate and factually present yourselves clearly and argue, comment, comment. I don't know, Prophet Madungwe, I don't know, my Christ, I don't know, I don't know. I also want to come to you, prosperity, you condemn preaching of prosperity. But the gospel of prosperity is encouraging people to work hard for themselves and maybe for the kingdom. That shanda, that this, shanda, shanda. Prosperity, I don't know, I don't know. It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. But, but, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know. It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know. It's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
All right, Jesus, I don't know, I don't know. Jesus, I don't know, the time is at the end. No, but Sicily, Matthew, I don't know, five, six. Sicily is kingdom, everything shall be added.
And to, eh, right.
So, I don't know, everything shall be added. I don't know, Solomon was the richest man, Abraham was the richest man also, but.
So, there is a sin between them and God.
No, because, those guys, preachers, they are rich. But those guys, they are rich. So, Sicily is kingdom, full stop, then added the party, it's not God, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, that added the party, I don't know, I don't know. Because, I don't know, I don't know. You cannot even pray for thirty minutes, you cannot even fast for one day. I don't know, I don't know. They don't know prosperity gospel, it's a Jewish. I don't know, I don't know. Sicily kingdom, I don't know, not a Jewish. Because, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, which is the word of God. If you know the truth, you shall be free, indeed, I don't know, not prosperity. So, I don't know, I don't know. Sicily, the kingdom of God, I don't know, which is wrong. I don't know, I don't know.
So, I don't know, seeking up, seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness and everything else will be added unto you. But seeking up, you've spoken about prayer, what else should people do so that they do away with the prosperity gospel and continue to live in the lines of seeking?
All right, seeking, I don't know, not the Bible, not the verses, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. When I'm on a mat, I don't know, I don't know. I see, I see. I see, I see. But, but, I see, I see. I see, I see. I see, I see. Everything shall be added unto you.
But, but, we have people in our society, I don't know, I don't know. 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 They even abandon going to fields to work. This, this, I don't know, because, I don't know, I don't know.
All right, I don't know.
My church, I don't know.
All right, I don't know, my rewards, I don't know, which reward do you want? Do you want internal reward or earthly reward? So, it depends, what do you want? I want my rewards, internal, not earthly too much. So, it depends, I don't know. Because, I don't know, it's a business. Because, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I need to reach people, I don't know, I don't know. Not the church, there is fifty million, I don't know, I don't know. It's not about that, it's not my goal. So, I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Even I don't believe, I don't know. Yes, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. But, but, I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. It's a long message, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Even I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
But, but, also becomes a measurement of the growth of the work of God that you have been doing since you started working with God. It also becomes a measurement, you don't know. Prophet Madungwe, I don't know.
Yes, but I'm not worried about the numbers.
Why can't you be worried about the numbers? Yet, 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 it's a measurement. Because, because, it's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, the problem, I ask my church my business, they want to measure. Like, I don't know, I don't know.
Ah, it's a business.
All right, all right, let me explain. In any way, I was trained in heaven. I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. But, but, no problem. There was mission, a prophet, message must reach people. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, so, I don't know, it's a business.
It's a business.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, it's a business. I don't know, it's a business.
Business, it's a business, but, it's a church, it's a church, it's a business, it's a business, let it be a business. It's a church, it's a church. Jesus, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know, Ukraine, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, founders, my church, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, HICC, I don't know, gentlemen, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Because, one of your mandate is to make sure you preach the good news to the people. I don't know, I don't know. So, what are you doing as Prophet Madungwe to make sure that even if we go to UFI, if we go to Zayoda, if we go to AFM? I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
All right, I don't know, it's a one day thing. I don't know, every year, I don't know, it's a, it's a. So, it's a one day thing, what rich man wants, it needs time, it's a, it's a. So, it's a, by God's time, it's a message.
Prophet Madungwe, I don't know, I don't know. 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 It's a celebratory, Easter and Christmas. Yes, it's a, it's a. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know relationship with God.
All right, Jesus, you don't know, I don't know. Leave sin, I don't know, I don't know. Let us leave sinless, Jesus, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. We do not promote sin, I don't know, I don't know. No, it's a prophet to rebuke, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Israel, I don't know, I don't know. So, I don't know, I don't know.
Because, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, my business, what's your message to all those people who have founded those churches whom you say they are leading people astray?
Yeah, our message to all those people, judgment is waiting for them and we shall not be easy for them. The judgment is coming, they are going to be judged very hardly, so let them stop misleading the people, I don't know. Sicily kingdom, not a Jewish. That's my message.
Because, what's your message?
Because, I don't know, I don't know. 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 I don't know, I don't know.
Remnants, church?
Yeah, remnants, I don't know. Because, I don't know, I don't know. 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 Gospel, remnants, remnants, I don't know. I don't know, let us continue to soldier on, I am there as your pioneer or as the top. I don't know, I don't know. 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 We are with you guys and you will continue to be with us. I don't know, I don't know. Gospel, remnants, write a triumphal, rub this darkness overing upon the nations.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, social media platforms, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. But, I don't know, remnants for desire.
All right, Jesus, my services, it depends, I say depending midweek, not Sunday. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, main, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, services, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Plus two six three, plus two six three seven seven six two three double one five six, let me repeat it. Two six three seven seven six two three double one five six. But, I don't know, I don't know. Social media, Instagram, I don't know, Twitter, Facebook. I don't know, I don't know. Facebook, chat, Prophet Madungwe church page, I don't know. WhatsApp number, I don't know. SMS, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. But, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Page, Facebook, but I post daily, I don't know, I don't know. Message, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. So, by month, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, judgment, I don't know, I don't know. And this year, we vote to punish, I don't know. Last year, I don't know, I don't know. But this year, judgment is coming, it's very powerful, and we shall announce it.
Dear Prophet Madungwe, I don't know, a special meeting where he also has a special invitation to go and wine and dine with God while they discuss the issues here on earth. That includes the war in Ukraine and versus Ukraine and Russia and also the burial of the apostles, it's like what he has said. I want to say thank you so much for all these comments that are flying left, right and center. I don't think it is an exhibit of the intelligentsia in your mind to just say, I don't know. I don't know, Prophet Madungwe, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I pay attention to Bible study at the end of the day. I don't know, I don't know. 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 Through these programs, at the end of the day, I don't know. Dear Prophet Madungwe, I don't know. Thank you so much for continuing to support us, share these programs to those that are interested in Christianity debates and also like and follow all our social media pages. My name is Sovesa Tafumane, on behalf of the crew behind the scenes, I want to say thank you, bye bye.